Six thirty.
It works.
So we'll send his mats ready here.
Don't get so bossy.
We're getting.
I'm sorry, that's my job.
Hello.
It's my job Barney.
Right. You have a lot to cover tonight.
Hey.
We gotta let all these people get in here first. We gotta set this pin. There we go.
Will everybody in?
Everybody is here, ready and accounted for.
All right, well it's six thirty and I see that we have a all the members of the city council, city of Hillsborough in the room and guests, so I will call the meeting of the city council, city of Hillsborough order. First item up on our agenda this evening is our consent agenda. Under our consent agenda, we have vouchers totaling two hundred ninety-two thousand, two hundred ninety-five dollars, fifty-six cents. Did everyone receive copies of the vouchers? Were there any questions regarding the vouchers? Uh, second is minutes from our November five, twenty twenty-four regular meeting and our November twelve, twenty twenty-four special meeting. Did everyone receive copies of the minutes? Were there any questions or corrections to the minutes? Third item is CDBG vouchers in the amount of thirty thousand, nine hundred forty-seven dollars, thirty-one cents. Everybody received copies of those? Any questions regarding CDBG? All right, hearing no questions, I would accept a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted. Councilman McCarty moves. Councilman Wilkins seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And we are now to our first opportunity for public comment. Is there anybody from the public that would like to address the council? Mr. Bennecke, a county, new county commissioner, not quite sworn in.
Couple of them that got another four years for the city. Want to thank everybody for their support. Hope we can make some changes for the future of our youth is my motto.
Well, we're always glad to have you and you're always welcome.
Back to Marla.
I'm Morgan.
Morgan. That presentation on the everything with the sewer was very fascinating.
Good.
Of how, and I've heard nothing, Frank Alzer thinks you're number one. Somebody in your courtroom for sure there.
Come visit us sometime, I'll give you a tour.
That'll work.
You can call some.
It was really interesting, your presentation through your last year's work.
We can talk for hours about that.
Let's not.
I'll get asked, well, how's things going? I say, well, how many hours you got to listen? And most of us said, well, if you're buying the whiskey or the beer, go then you're online.
Okay, well, thanks for coming and like I said.
Only thing I didn't think about was I'll be seventy when I get off this gig.
Yep. I can relate to that. Just don't let anybody know that we're the same age. Oops. I guess I did. All right, is there any other members of the public that would like to address the council? Hearing none, we will close that first public comment opportunity. And next we will move into a discussion of our fire station project and we have with us Greg Barnberg of Raymond James and he is our financial advisor. Welcome Greg.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Don't mind that. So first of all.
And if you wouldn't mind, if you could come to the podium, we'd appreciate that.
Yeah, absolutely.
They'd get you on centered on camera there.
Right here. Yep, so again Greg Barnberg, Raymond James and Associates, and appreciate the opportunity to be here and talk to you about the fire stations. I know you had a discussion a couple of weeks ago and sorry I couldn't join you at that meeting, but appreciate your schedule and time today. You know, when we had a chance to visit with you about the financing plan for the fire station, you know, it's a really exciting opportunity and the USDA has some very powerful financing programs, well, community facilities program being one of those. And the USDA approach to financing projects is that they'll provide the permanent takeout of a construction financing, that they won't provide the short-term construction financing. So we oftentimes help put together a plan of finance for, you might tackle a project like that. So the, the handout that I had shared with you, the bound of presentation, this really shows those two steps, a short-term financing, we've used a temporary note issue, we're a short-term construction financing. And we're showing a total project fund deposit of about six point one million. But when we structure the short-term financing, we know that you may not want to make interest payments during construction. And so we'll also fund what's called capitalized interest. And capitalized interest is where when we issue the temporary notes, we take part of the proceeds, put those in a fund. And that money in that capitalized interest fund is intended to use, used for paying interest during construction. So we provide the six point one million, if that ends up being the project cost, that allows you to build the fire station. The deposit to the capitalized interest fund pays the interest on that short-term financing. And then when the project is done, you work with the USDA to roll that temporary note issue into the long-term permanent USDA financing. And that's when you'll, uh, when begin making payments on the financing. So one of the unique aspects of that approach where you have a USDA takeout is when we're working with the bond rating agencies, um, they typically would look at the financial condition of the city like revenues of a utility system or whatever the intended source of revenue would be, could be sales tax or property tax. But here they're really not worried about the financial condition of the city, what they're really focused on is that USDA takeout. Uh, because they know that ultimately that entire temporary note issue is going to be paid from the USDA long-term financing and not from city funds. And so you end up, um, we've worked with Moody's, um, primarily is the one who has a program for rating this type of a financing. You end up with what's called a Mig One rating, which is the highest possible short-term rating, helps you get favorable interest rates on your short-term construction or temporary note issue. Um, and the USDA or the, excuse me, Moody's will look at what's called the USDA letter of conditions. And once you, um, have a project approved by the USDA and they agreed to provide that long-term permanent financing, uh, they will issue what's called a letter of conditions. And that letter of conditions is, is just that, it will spell out all of the conditions that are required for the USDA to issue or provide that long-term permanent financing. And they'll have in there, you know, have to have an environmental audit and have to have certain, you know, um, reports or studies done before construction starts. And as long as you are meeting those conditions, then the USDA says that when you, you met these conditions and construction is complete, call us and then we'll start that process of issuing that long-term financing. So right now, I think the USDA program, you know, the interest rate moves around a little bit. It's still a very attractive borrowing cost, I think it is around three, three quarter or three and seven eighths percent. And they'll provide a, um, forty-year financing program is what they often will do in Kansas. Um, I know the city has taken advantage of some USDA programs in the past for utility, uh, projects. Uh, so this works very similar to that. Uh, that's the process that we go through. They issue the short-term financing and then make sure that we have the USDA permanent financing there at, at the end of the process. So the, the report, the first part of the report shows what that short-term temporary note would look like. We're showing, you know, the average interest rate that you would be issuing the temporary notes at would be three point seven six percent. And we're showing final maturity date or final payment in September of twenty twenty-six. And obviously, we don't know the exact construction schedule, but this, as an example of what this might look like. And so typically we'll have a temporary note that will have a final maturity that's a little bit longer than when you expect construction to be complete. But also a call feature that allows you to prepay this early and roll it into the USDA financing. Uh, whenever the project's done. And then if you look back at the, the pages further back in the book, for example, on page nine, you can see what that debt service schedule might look like from USDA permanent financing. Again, you don't use any city funds to pay the temporary notes and you only begin making payments on the financing once you roll that into the USDA permanent takeout. And the other thing that's worth mentioning is that um, you think about how we have saved bonds for the city in the past. Explore a replacement option where we send a package to local or regional banks. Um, and if we don't get something acceptable, then we'll go through a public offering to bond investors. You can complete the temporary notes in that same way, we would look at a direct placement, see if that's a viable option. Um, you always have a public offering of the temporary notes available, that would be where you sell it to multiple investors. But then also there are some programs where you can get construction financing where there's a USDA takeout, really through kind of a specialized program. And that's something that's a little bit unique to this type of a, a project. And we would want to explore that for you as well. So separately, I pulled together a calendar, um, and Matt had mentioned that you would be interested in the steps or the process that you would go through. And, you know, again, we're making some guesses on what these dates would be and I don't want you to feel as if we're suggesting you need to follow the schedule, but this, this shows the timeframe and the steps that you would go through. Um, so obviously we're here November nineteenth, talking about how the plan of finance would work. Um, there was some discussion about possibly having some community input meetings, we're showing that that might occur in December. Um, and then really, um, one of the more challenging parts of the calendar to figure out is how long it would take to get USDA approvals, how long it would take to get that USDA letter of condition back. So we're, we're making some assumptions here that you submit that application, say the early part of twenty twenty-five and then you get that, uh, letter of conditions back towards the end of February. Uh, we wouldn't want to move forward with the short-term financing until we have that letter of conditions in hand. But then the process, and, and you also would want to have an idea of what your constructing costs would be, get the construction bids in before you decide how much you finance. Once you have that construction cost, uh, where you're comfortable with that, the USDA letter of conditions in hand, then you could start that process of completing the financing. And again, um, we'd explore the direct placement, public offering. But once we start the temporary note issue, it's about a two-month process, uh, from beginning to end. Um, halfway through you would lock in the interest rate. And then here we're showing a closing. You know, a sale of the notes to investors actually out in May. Um, assuming you'd want to go through the construction bid process in March and April. And then have a closing of the financing towards the end of May, begin construction, and we've made some some guesses on what that construction timeframe might look like. But here if you start the construction in the, you know, late spring of twenty-five, let's say it's done. You know, and you're so later, then you'd be looking at rolling that USDA financing, summer of, of twenty-six. So we made a lot of guesses on the calendar, but hopefully you can see the steps we go through and it helps paint the picture of what that process might look like. I would have to answer any questions or if there are other aspects of the financing how it works, I'm happy to address those questions as well.
Greg, what's your experience been about getting uh, condition, um, letter of conditions back from USDA as a turnaround? Sixty days, forty-five days?
You know, you could have asked me an easier question.
Read into the tea a little bit for me Greg.
We've worked on some, it's, it's such a powerful program, financing program. It's a great end result, but it's just sometimes the process can be, take a little longer than you might, might wish or, or hope. Um, and honestly, the, my experience has been kind of all over the board, sometimes it's fairly quick. And I, I don't know where you're at in talking to any of Kansas USDA officials in terms of the project and qualifications.
We've been working with them a little bit on that, just in preparation, but it's, uh, they're, they're as uncertain as anybody else, I think, at this point, and, uh, especially with transition and administration, you know, what who's going to be doing what and where and by and large, I think everybody locally feels pretty solid, but you know, what that process is going to look like for them to they're not real confident, I guess is what I would say.
Well, and Andrew and I have been working with the Kansas Power Pool or KPT on solar project and it's a different program, but still we have been waiting on that letter of conditions and it's a, a couple of months, you know, to get that, so.
Okay.
That's, use that as an example of what that process might look like, but it does help having that discussions already with USDA.
Yeah, of course, once, once they give it to you, they expect you to respond and then turn it around in three days or order.
Wait, wait, hurry. But it, there are, if, if you're having those discussions and you feel confident that that you'll get it, then there are certain things that if you need to move the project along more quickly, you can start, you know, getting ready for the construction bids and even getting some things ready.
You know, some of the, some of the, I don't know if the, if concern is the right word, but some of the thought process is this project is, I, as counsel, I feel pretty solid that we're, we believe it's necessary. That being said, you know, the costs of, of this are not insignificant for a city of our size. But the, you know, again, more into the tea leaves questions. You know, are we anticipating, um, interest, interest, cost, interest to go up, down, you know, in the, in the near to short term? I mean, is there, from a timing standpoint, or, you know, is, is, are we timing this as best we can in your opinion?
Uh, well.
And, and not, you know, again, it's our decision, you know, and, and we're just looking for your, your guidance and.
Yeah, and, and so this is obviously a long-term financing, you know, a forty-year financing, if you're looking at interest rates that are you know, under the USDA program, three and three-quarter or three and seven eights. I mean, that's better than you can get in the bond market right now. And there's been a lot of discussion about Federal Reserve and, and lowering interest rates and, you know, don't lose sight of the fact that Federal Reserve is really controlling short-term interest rates, and that's where we've seen probably some of the most immediate change is that some of the investment rates, uh, for your idle funds are, are starting to come down as we've, you know, seen some of that Federal Reserve action. It, it's been a really interesting year in the bond market from a long-term interest rate perspective because the ten-year treasury reached its, in municipal bonds followed the treasury market, uh, ten-year treasury hit four point seven percent in April. And then we started a pretty steady decline and we got all the way down to about three point five eight percent in September. And that was about the time everybody said, see, we all predicted it, we said rates are going to go down. And we've reversed course since then and we're at about a four point three eight percent today. So you know, what's really driving the longer-term interest rates, I think a lot of long-term bond investors are more worried about inflation. And some of the recent reports have come out and it's like, well, wait a minute, inflation may not be under control quite as much as we thought. Little bit more inflationary than what some people were expecting in some of those reports and and, and then you have a new administration and, and people start speculating, well, what does that change in terms of some tax policies or things that might impact that? So it's a little, there's a lot of mixed opinions right now where interest rates will go. But I still think, you know, if you're looking at a USDA program, you're probably not going to see a dramatic change in that rate. Um, and I think they reset it at the end of each quarter. Um, so you might see it move from three and a half percent to four percent or something like that. But it's probably not going to be as wild of a swing or as much of a swing as you see on if you were issuing the bonds directly. That's where you start seeing more of that interest rate movement.
So with the long-term USDA financing, uh, we would have an option, this happens all the time, where we would, if, if the market was to say, get below that rate, we could go back out, refinance this and, and just turn it into GL bond or something.
Yeah, and, and that's exactly what we did, I think it was a water project that you had a USDA outstanding and it's a tough interest rate to beat, but if in the conventional bond market drops enough, then you can go out and refinance that. Um, the other thing that the USDA allows you to do is to increase the payment and really kind of start chipping away at shortening that and reducing the amount of outstanding. And I think the city has done that in the past as well, where you had funds, you make a larger payment and that reduces your interest expense.
And just, uh, just for those of you that weren't on the council at the time that we did that refinancing, that saved us over a million dollars. So it was not an insignificant, uh, insignificant move and really appreciate Greg, your help in, in, in putting that, putting that back in the taxpayers' pocket.
Yeah, and it, you know, the, the, the only thing I would say about the USDA program is it's a longer repayment period than you might pick if you're selling bond yourself. But the, the beauty of it is that you've got the, you'll have lower payments kind of at the beginning. Then you can start accelerating those payments, or you can look at refinancing it and sometimes um, I've worked in a number of cities or counties where we couldn't really change the interest rate much, but if we take a forty-year financing and shorten it up to twenty years or twenty-five years when you're comfortable in doing so, then you can save a lot of interest expense that way also.
And, you know, a lot of our discussion has been, you know, you mentioned inflation, you know, the cost to do this project. We don't feel we're going to get less, we don't, we're not comfortable that, that it's going to cost us less if we wait, you know, in a year or whatever, you know, to, to start.
That's, uh, you hit me with the two tough questions, USDA timing and interest rates. The construction cost going down, I'd be safe making a, a little prediction on that.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions for, for Mr. Barnberg? Is everybody clear on kind of the timeframe that, uh, that, that you're seeing and, and also the, uh, the financing mechanism? Everybody comfortable with how that's going to work? You get the short-term piece that then becomes the long-term, you know, with USDA. Okay.
Great.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you Greg.
Thank you Greg.
Yeah, well, thank you. Appreciate the timeline.
Yes.
So Matt, you're going to, uh, set up some, uh, some community input opportunities possibly, or are we going to do that in conjunction with council meetings or?
I think, uh, I think it would be good to have a standalone kind of approach. Given that, if that's something you want to do, which I, I would highly recommend you should do. Um, there are other options too, if you wanted to do some more internal meetings or have some open house type things where you wouldn't all have to be here. You can do that, those are easier for us to schedule, but, um, you know, I think having one of those town hall type meetings where everybody's here, we got an opportunity to talk. Um, I think that would be the best and, um, just kind of pulling the calendar up, looking at that, trying to keep it within this. Uh, that next, the second week of December is, is probably the best option, I think you get any further into December and
Right.
Then the problem is. Um, so you know, that would be the ninth through the thirteenth, uh, highly, I would highly discourage you from Friday night meetings. Uh, those do not go well, Wednesday night meetings typically aren't super well attended in this town either, a lot of people have church obligations. So the tenth Tuesdays, Tuesdays are good, Mondays are. Nope, that's the Tuesday between council meetings.
Okay, okay.
We, we also have to consider the sports.
The sports schedule is always a thing.
The staff Christmas party is on.
Oh, it's on the tenth.
Oh.
Can't do that though.
So that would be.
Thursday, the eleventh.
Well.
Or Monday the ninth would be options, as far as sports schedule goes, I haven't looked.
You're going to be better off sooner rather than later, because I think that Mound Ridge tournament starts at first, per second week of December.
Yeah. Real quick. So I don't know what everybody's schedule is, of course, not everybody has to be here, but, uh, if you are, I, like I say, it's better to post it as a special meeting, let's have that. Uh, if we don't end up having a quorum, fine, we can still have the town hall, um, but better safe than sorry, I don't want to get anybody in trouble.
I thought we had a pretty good turnout with the, uh, project for Men and I Housing. A lot of people didn't.
The first or the second time?
Oh, I thought both of them, I thought were good. Um, but it gave the community an opportunity to just listen and hear and even ask questions, there's questions I didn't even think about.
So Monday the ninth, uh, there's middle school basketball games?
At home or away?
They are at home, home games, Smokey Valley. Um.
If generally they're, they're, they don't go that long, they generally start early and, and, and end relatively early, so. I mean, if we had a seven o'clock meeting, I think that would probably give most people an opportunity to be here.
Yeah.
You know, it's kind of work for me.
Thursday is not great because that's when that, that tournament starts that week, so.
Let's, let's look at Monday.
Monday, December ninth.
So we'll have to start getting the word out quickly.
Yeah.
So we need to, uh, take council action and set that special meeting?
Set that as a special meeting.
Okay. So we would set the special meeting for seven PM, Monday, December nine. Here in City Hall.
Yeah, we'll actually do it, uh, at the fire station, but City Hall will.
I think we, we would start here and then move out. Because we're going to want, they're going to probably want to have the presentation along with the show and tell, so.
They most certainly will.
Do you need a second for that?
Well, I need a motion.
Go ahead.
Oh, motion. Matt Wilkins will make the motion for the special meeting. Councilman By will second, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, we have a special meeting on the ninth.
We'll do that and then I will talk with Ben about putting together some additional kind of open house things, um.
We may even want to think about some transportation from here out to AMBI.
Yeah.
So I don't know.
We can let people run the fire truck.
Well, I don't know if we could do that or not.
Andrew?
Talk to your insurance agent.
Yeah.
Waivers, that's all we need.
Everybody gets waivers. We could, we could get a school bus, yeah, I'm sure we could make that happen.
Yeah, okay. Very good. So now that puts us into our business items portion of our agenda. Safe travels Greg.
Thank you.
First item up there is consideration of proposals from Johnson Services for sewer inspection and repair. Mr. Stiles?
Thank you sir, so let me pull that back up. Um, we, we had talked about this, you know, of course, we've been doing this for the last few years, trying to get get ourselves caught up with the INI issue, which is the floating infiltration, which is when, um, rainwater infiltrates through cracks and some manholes, different things. Um, so we spent quite a bit of money in the last few, well, last year basically, uh, doing sewer lining with Johnson, uh, Johnson Company. And so, uh, we're, we're sort of at the point where let's look at the next piece, we've sort of been going down the line, this is what we need to do. And so this is kind of the next piece, uh, which would be a round of, of camera inspection, cleaning uh, of areas of town that we think will be, uh, kind of next on the lining list. And so what that does is that, that gives us a five-year window effectively to where we do the camera cleaning, inspection, uh, until we have to line the project, um, they'll do it up until that five years. Uh, so that would be kind of a big chunk of this project and, well, a chunk of this project, and then we also have on their proposal to do uh, a section of rehabilitation of manholes and our primary lift station. Uh, with a couple of products there, they would clean that, um, epoxy it, resurface it and, and we have some, our, our sewer folks, Morgan and Caleb are here to kind of talk a little bit about that, and we actually have a video of, of what this actually looks like, because I know this is something that's sort of abstract, if you haven't actually seen the video. Uh, we're trying to get it to work and I don't know if we have it or not.
It's not compatible.
It's not working, okay. It wasn't letting me download it either, so we don't actually have a video of the inspections, which is a bummer because Caleb was really stoked about it. Um, but I would, uh, invite Caleb to kind of talk, you're going to be doing the presentation or Morgan?
I think both of us.
Both of you come on up.
Well, come on down.
You're the next big winner.
At the podium, come on down.
All of you have heard me rattle on about water and sewer, a couple of times at least. Caleb Spencer, he, I think most of you know him, he's our wastewater whiz kid, um, also in the fire department, um, we got around. we got around October and, um, realized we had a little bit of extra money left in our capital improvements fund in the sewer department. So we asked Matt if we could put together, um, a project to finish out the year, to use those funds to help us progress on this I and I problem that we have. So um, the last time Johnson's was here and did lining for us, they discovered several manholes that are old and in very poor condition. And so they're at the top of our list to start lining those. Some of these manholes are, are made with old brick and mortar and the mortar has washed out of them over the years. The hydrogen sulfide um, plays a big factor on the deterioration of those. Um, so these manholes are at the top of our list because they're almost too far gone. Um, if we don't do something with them pretty quickly, then we'll be replacing them. So they're, they're the ones that we're going to focus on. Um, they showed up last week with you. Um, they did some GoPro video of the manholes, which was really cool. And that's why we were here tonight to show those to you, but not going to work. Uh, some crayon drawings.
Real quick, I might have an alternative. I don't know if this might work. I don't know how I try it.
So while he'll, he's, he's trying that, we'll talk a little bit more about the manholes. There's, um, we have three, three manholes and then our primary lift station down at the old sewer plant. This is the lift station where all of the sewage comes down from the, um, the bulk of the town and then the, um, sewage is pumped to the lagoons. Um, this one has a liner on it that, uh, was installed in two thousand and nine that is deteriorating and pulling away from the walls. And so we're really wanting to get that one rehabbed as well so that it doesn't cause any damage to the concrete mortar behind it and start deteriorating the actual structure. So that's kind of the, the bulk of the project that we have. Um, I think we're at about seventy-five thousand. Is that correct, Matt?
Seventy-five thousand four hundred.
Seventy-five thousand four hundred. Um, and they told us that if we got, um, positive affirmation from the council that they could be here in
Thursday.
Thursday to start. So, um, the, the camera part of, the camera part of the project is important because um, we have, so far we have lined everything that we know is contributing to our I and I problem. And now we had, just have the scattering of some, um, sewer mains out there that we're not quite sure of their condition. Um, and we'd like to get those cameras so that we can be more proficient in our attack on lining those. And it's not just kind of a guessing game. So they can do the camera work on it and then we can put together a three to five year plan to do lining on that and hit the ones that are, are, um, most important to us right now that are, are declining. What did I miss?
That's what the three manholes that we're going to focus on are three that lift stations dump into. So the H two S gas is significantly higher than any other ones.
Where are those at?
Uh, we have one just south, uh, north of Casey's, which is the one that's our highest priority right now. Um, it's a fifty-fifty shot that they're going to blow through the wall when they go to clean it. Um, so they're going to try that one first. Um, if we have to end up pulling that manhole and putting a new one, we're talking about road repair, sewer line cutbacks, um, lift station downage, well, two lift stations. Um, then there's another one by the golf course, um, it'd be Yeah, Jim Baker's house street.
Yeah.
Um, and then the third one was on Oakland Manor. So on Third and Birch. So.
Do you have the sample of what the?
I forgot it.
You got the sample. You had great visual aid.
I brought the video. So in, and one of the manholes, the one that's on Third and Birch, um, their proposal was to, um, just shoot it. It's, it's a chemical that's called, um, Obic. It's the same color as the hat. So, uh,
Red orange. Yeah.
They, it's a, they paint or they power wash and then it's a two-part. It's their adhesion back and then their outer coating. Um, it's about a half inch thick when they're done. Um, it has a ten-year warranty. So if any defects happen in ten years, they replace it under their cost.
And it's got an eighty-year lifespan.
Yeah, eighty-year lifespan. So, and that's all based on, you know, the application and prep and because the liner that's in the lift station now was, we're assuming a bad application and cleaning. So we're actually getting moisture back behind the liner, which is causing it to come in and then it's also eating the concrete behind it. So.
Were these the same guys that did the lining? Was that a year ago?
Yes.
Okay.
Same company.
Yeah.
I would say that they are the only sewer lining company that I've ever dealt with where I don't think we had any issues with them missing a cut for somebody's service. Knock on wood.
Yeah, exactly.
Uh, because that is usually where the problem is with sewer lining is that, uh, somebody will miss it, miss a cut or something, and then that backs up into somebody's house and then there's a mess. It's on them.
Right, right.
But, you know, it's just, it's a problem we have to deal with. Uh, and so that's something that, you know, I would say to their credit, they've been very good with that. And they've also been very good in, in explaining things to you guys and walking you through the process.
And their communication has been huge.
Yeah, they're, um, I've been really happy with their service with our community. They spend a lot of time with education with us. Um, and education with Caleb onsite and, you know, showing him different things that he wouldn't have, you know, knowledge of unless he was there onsite. So they share their tools, their experience. Um, they're great guys to work with and, um, we're happy that they could pop in and give us a quote on something at the last minute and then be available for us. Um, part of it is that they're already in Kansas. They're working in Silvan, Silvan Grove right now. Um, so our mobilization would be less than if they came just specifically for us. So.
So that's what they said that their plan, if we get approved, would be they have a blockage um, here in Kansas, then they'll be here Thursday morning to start. Um, he's looking at if we get approved for manhole lining, that's going to be a couple of weeks after. Um, but they said that it might be here for two weeks, just doing the camera work and stuff anyhow. So.
So what you have there, uh, there's basically two estimates, ones for the cleaning cameras who are, uh, root sawing, everything else, which does actually help us too.
Oh, yeah.
It's, it's pretty big. It's a pretty big service for us because it's something that you really ought to be doing regularly anyway. Um, just like your normal house service. If you get roots and stuff in it, you know, doesn't flow, right? So same type of thing. Um, and of course this is good for the five-year period that, uh, allows us to go back in and, and re-line these if that's something that needs to happen. Um, so that's the thirty-three thousand one fifty and then the rehab on the manholes is a separate one. Uh, again, you kind of see that mobilization. I think you said we saved about fifteen thousand on mobilization with being able to kind of squeeze it with them. Um, so you get the wet well, uh, epoxy, which is the main lift station. Then you got three manhole rehabs, which Caleb told you where those are at. Um, it's that, that liner, the Obic product, which goes on as, it looks like foam. Center layers foam, uh, an outer layer of the, the bright orange stuff. Uh, ten-year warranty on that, which is not really very, it's not common in, in sewer work. You don't really see warranties on those. Um, so that's something that's, that's kind of nice, eighty-year product. And of course their lining product's a hundred-year product. None of us will be able to tell if it actually makes it, but that's okay.
I think that's the whole.
That's the goal, right? And then I'm okay with it. So, uh, but that, that total cost for that is forty-two thousand seven twenty-five, which brings you up to seventy-five four hundred. So uh, that would be the proposal. Typically, you know, we, we already kind of did the work last year for twenty-four, what we sort of set aside. So we set aside two hundred and seventy-five for this year to do that, knowing that we already did some of it previous year. Cause we took advantage of another opportunity. Um, so there's still about eighty-eight thousand there that would be what we would consider for capital improvements. You have plenty of budget authority there. You still have the two hundred and seventy-five thousand, but as far as cash goes, the eighty-eight is about where you want to be. Uh, so the seventy-five fits right underneath that and, you know, it seems like a pretty good opportunity. And the only reason I would say yes, let's move forward with this because we have a good relationship with Johnson. They've been pretty good with us. And again, they have not, not led us astray. So, yeah, knock on wood. Um, so that's what we would recommend is moving forward with that. Um, and, you know, of course, these guys are the experts. They can answer any questions we have on the technical side.
I would like to say that the work that we've done thus far, we've seen about a fifty percent reduction, at least a fifty percent reduction in the I and I with the rainwater coming into our lift stations, which, which helps us with a consent decree that we had from EPA. So, um,
We are off the naughty list.
We are off the naughty list, right? But they are, they are watching to make sure that we, we continue to make market improvements and, um, um, the, the line that we've done previously put a huge dent in that, those old, um, clay remains that we have. So thank, thank you for letting us do that.
Oh, sorry. Um, how long will we be on their watch list to, you know, make sure that we're making the improvement?
I don't know. Anytime something happens, we have to do an incident report to K D H E. Um, anytime, any type of sewage lands on the ground, we have to estimate how, the quantity of that. And then we have to file an incident report. So as long as we keep our incident reports down, um, that's their indicator. You know, when they start stacking up and they start seeing that we're having problems again that we're not addressing, then they'll be calling us again.
I think the important thing is making progress and sure that you're actively trying to remedy the situation. So.
We've gotten this far. Let's keep going.
Right.
Other questions? Hearing none, would accept a motion to approve or accept, excuse me, accept the bid, right?
Yeah.
We're accepting the bid from Johnson Service in the amount of seventy-five thousand four hundred dollars. Councilman Jorgensen moves. Councilman Wilkins seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Project is, uh, we're going to accept the bid and let's get them going. Thank you, guys.
If anybody wants to watch the videos.
They are actually really cool. I will say, uh, they're three sixty and you can stop it, manipulate it any way you want and you can see all the way around it. It's very cool. I'm sorry it didn't work. Our threat protection actually blocked me from downloading the program. So. So our cybersecurity is working too.
It's interactive. So you can actually look up and look at how the walls are deteriorating and look down at the, the shelving on the bottom and see how bad it's gotten. So it's, it's pretty neat. That's why I was excited because you could actually see how bad everything was.
We'll actually, we'll try to figure out a way to. We'll see if we can figure out a way to get that video on TV.
I mean, home laptop, it'd be fine.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
You guys.
Okay. Next item up is consideration of proposed twenty-twenty-four budget amendment, Mr. Styles.
Thank you, sir. So this is a kind of a regular part of our process. Um, we do, we do a lot of budget amendments in, in Hillsborough. Um, so when we started out the year, uh, we well, to back up, so you have a budget authority, uh, which is what you create whenever you adopted, um, an annual budget. Uh, there's something called the state budget basis law and that's something we have to, to live by. So if there are ever adjustments within the budget that uh, would exceed us out of that fund for that purpose, uh, then we have to make an amendment. You can make an amendment up until the very last day of the year. Uh, obviously if you do that, then you have to, you have, you still have to do the public, uh, hearing process. So there's a ten-day period. It's got to be published in a newspaper. We can't do it on our website. Uh, and then you can have, you have to hold a public hearing so that everybody has an opportunity to take a, take a look at it. Uh, it's almost exactly like what we do, uh, for the regular budget. It's just a little bit of a mini version. Um, so we go through every year and kind of look at what's out there, what, where have we had issues? Is there things we need to adjust? We knew, we knew we would have a few this year. Um, fewer than, you know, I, I actually ended up being a little bit less than I thought, uh, because we had a lot of budget authority in a couple of other places. Uh, because we had anticipated some larger capital expenditures. For example, in water department, we had, uh, the entire amount of the uh, forgivable loan project, we budgeted that in. So there's a million dollars extra, uh, of budget authority there, even though we didn't spend it, we still have that authority. Um, so that's kind of how the process works. Uh, and when we walked through it, I went back through and we go, uh, Danielle and I sit down and look at the financials. Say, all right, where do we need to make adjustments? Uh, we only had a few, uh, things this year. So the big one is the electric fund. Um, that's, you know, our main utility. The biggest piece with that was that we had a couple of capital projects. We exceeded our capital lines by a hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, those are tied specifically to things. Um, so when we did, we bought transformers in advance of the Menonai Housing project. Uh, bought some transformers for the Third Street, uh, container home project. Uh, biggest thing was probably the USD four-ten project. They needed a fairly significant transformer. So we ended up exceeding that. We will have corresponding revenues and we actually did have some corresponding revenue already come in for those. Once we get them, we bill them and when they're installed. Uh, so we did exceed that. There was a couple of other lines that I adjusted in there too. The other piece in there is I put in, uh, some additional increases in transfers from the electric to general fund, thinking that uh, we may want to make that, we may not end up making them, but, um, we were thinking, well, if we're going to go out for a bond issue, uh, it might be better to rebalance some of those funds to have a little bit more money in the general fund because that's what they, they tend to look at that a little bit more significantly. Uh, so we did put a quarter million extra in there. It's financially, it's fine as far as what the electric fund can handle. Um, and it would just be able to, that was basically just to add to the bottom line for the general fund in case we needed to go out to the market to look at what that looks like, uh, for financing. So uh, but with the short-term financing that Greg talked about from Moody's, then we don't really need to worry about that as much, but I still have it in here. Um, I still think it's a, it's a good idea to have that flexibility just in case we need to do something with that. Uh, and then we actually created some new funds this year that we knew we needed to do from, uh, input from the auditors. So we had to put in, uh, the Community Development Block Grant Fund. We made a C D B G fund. We've been spending money out of that. Uh, but we never, we never actually had a fund in there. And so they told us, like, yeah, you really had to account for that through the budget process. And so we added that fund. Uh, we also added the Health Insurance Reserve Fund, which is our, uh, what we pay our claims out of, our claims reserve. That shows up now. Uh, that's at the, uh, advice of the auditor as well. And then of course we added bowling alley. So we need to have a fund for that to account for all the funds that go into that. So those are the four pieces that you have there. Difference really, the main stuff is, is the electric thing. Uh, the other pieces are, are pretty they're new. I mean, they're just new things that kind of came up this year. So, um, my goal is to get to the point where we're not making budget set for year, but, um, I just, we're just not there yet. We're getting there. We're not there yet. Uh, we would have been if we can gotten rid of some of those new things. We decided to do this. But those are good projects. I mean, they're worthy projects, obviously. We wanted to do the daycare center. We wanted to do the, the North Main projects and no, we just have to account for those. And so that's what those amendments are for. So, uh, I did set the budget hearing in the, in the proposal here for the seventeenth of December, which is our normal, normal council meeting. Uh, if you guys approve that or, you know, want, want to set that time, then we would just move forward with that and we'll get it published in the newspaper next week so that we're well ahead of our ten days. So I'd answer any questions you might have about it. There's not a lot of meat in the budget amendment form itself, but I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
So at least with the, uh, C D B G and the Health Insurance Reserve. Correct me if I'm wrong. So that was, that was money already in the budget. It's just now in a separate category, right? So it's just being shifted from just in the general to just its own.
Well, it always existed kind of, it always exists outside of the general fund, but, um, it wasn't, we didn't book it as a budgeted fund. We booked it as a non-budgeted fund. Uh, and the auditors want us to show that as a budgeted fund, which makes sense. Um, I'm still a little bit on the fence about the Health Insurance Reserve Fund. I'm not totally sold that that needs to be that way, but if they tell us it does, then we're going to do it. It is, it's just advice of the auditors and I don't like it when Danielle gets yelled at by the auditors and then she yelled, I mean, that's why we make these changes.
I've heard you yell.
I'd say make, make kind of a fearsome reputation.
Wait till next week.
Somebody's got to be fierce around this.
That's right.
We got to have some kind of law around here.
That's right.
You start scaring the taser and the gun. But thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I would, uh, accept a motion to set the, uh, budget amendment hearing for our normal meeting on December seventeenth.
I'll make that motion.
Councilman By moves. Councilman McCarthy seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And now we're up to item three, consideration of ordinance fourteen hundred. And I see the number. Creating a comprehensive fee schedule, Mr. Styles.
Thank you, sir. So this is the arrival of our comprehensive fee schedule. We've got this in our strategic plan to do and we actually started working on this two years ago. Um, it's actually before Andrew was our city attorney. Kimberlin actually started the strategy.
Started it, yeah.
Yeah. So this is a, yeah, it's been a long time in the making. Let's say that. Um, and as you can see from the length of it, it is a very vast document. Uh, really the important thing to kind of focus on is the table there. That's where the table of fees is. Um, and that's kind of where all the, well, the, the benefit comes from this because when we go to amend this, if we ever have to make amendments to, we just amend the table. Um, so that's kind of how that, that collects all those fees. Um, so that's kind of how that, that collects all those fees, uh, from all those citations within the city code and puts them here so that we can just amend it this way. Makes it a lot simpler. Uh, it makes it easier for us to administer these fees. All we have to do is have this list and, and some notes and, and then we can move forward and do it. Uh, we did make some corrections to all the fees as far as, you know, updating them. Uh, we didn't make anything huge or uh, dramatic or draconian or anything like that as far as what there are. A lot of these just reflect sort of how we do things or how we've changed things, uh, either by policy or by, uh, resolution in the past. They just really need to be changed by ordinance. And so this is how that works now. You know, we've, we've got a lot of different, a lot of different fees. We actually ended up taking a few out as well, so, you know, there's a ton of different stuff in here, all the way through, you know, every, every section of the code has its own fees. We actually had some fees, uh, that were in the code that never had a fee assigned to them, uh, and so we had to assign some, some fees to that. Um, when possible, what we do is, is create a, a system where there's a fee. A good one is road construction. If you have to cut into a road. It's very, very, yeah, uh, chapter fifteen, which is on page six. There's like a, a new service hookup. So we would do, we'd set the fee as fifty dollars and then, uh, before it would have an actual number. So it would be two hundred and sixty-four dollars. That was what the fee was when we assigned it in the code. Now it's just the fifty bucks and then the material cost. So that changes as, as material costs change. That's the idea for that. Uh, so that we can kind of keep it moving in the right direction and then we don't lose any money. Um, we have some fees in the existing code where they're set at that number, but that number isn't reality anymore. Um, that, that cost has gone up. In some cases, it's been many, many years since it's been updated. So, I'm fairly confident that we've done this. We've gone through the, everybody's had a look at this. They've gone through it with a pretty fine comb. Uh, Andrew and I went through and did the final bits to it, uh, last week. So I'm pretty confident that this is accurate and that this is what we would recommend. Uh, if you want to get into any specifics about what this fee or that is, happy to do that. But these are, these sort of reflect the costs, uh, and then things that, you know, we're not really making a ton of money on these, but we're covering our costs essentially, so.
Questions?
I do?
Yeah.
Me too. You go first.
Okay. So, since this, um, uh, fee table is part of its own ordinance, does that mean that if we do ever amend this ordinance to change a fee, would it just retroactively, you know, go back to the specific ordinance that the fee is in? Or, I, do you get kind of what I'm trying to say?
Can I answer Matt?
Yeah.
Okay, so the reason why this ordinance is so long is once you get past the table, we've amended every other section in the entire code that says there's a fee for, and where it used to maybe have said the fee for this is twenty dollars, it now says the fee for this is as set forth in one eleven oh one. So all that stuff is to, is to reference then in your, in your code back to that table section so that, exactly what you're saying, you ever want to change that fee again in the future, you just change the table. Because what we have in the code is everything else just pointing back to the table.
So that's what I was kind of hoping, so.
We don't have to do thirty-five pages.
Right. Now, there's a trade-off. If you want to change one line, we have to do a new ordinance with the whole table in it, but it's, it's easy. It just, it's a little, uh, you know, yeah.
And then I can pass it to Joe.
So we did all that work on the, uh, the food truck rental fee, and I could have missed it. Uh, the table was pretty expensive, extensive, but I didn't see something like that show up. Is that something that's supposed to be in there?
Chapter five, uh, it's on page five. Uh, mobile food vendor license. So it shows on chapter, chapter five, item fifty-one, the table. It's mobile food vendor license. So there's a background check and the annual fee and daily license.
The rent, so the rental on our.
Oh, 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 on ours. We set that by policy, so it's not actually in the, it's not in the ordinance.
Supposed to show up in there.
Wouldn't be in that one.
Okay. Alright, so that's why.
Then I have another one.
Sure.
For item eleven in chapter two, the dog registration and issuance of tag fees. Um, could you just explain, because I was curious, for January to March, the fee is five, but then from April to December, it's ten. You know why?
Explain that one? No, okay, cool. That's fine. Uh, January to March, yeah, no, so we do it on, they're all due in March. Uh, that's why it's set as five dollars in March. And so the ten dollars, if you pick it up anytime after that, is essentially a late fee to pick it up. Yeah, they're all due in March, that's why.
I believe it was previously set as it would add a dollar each month.
Oh.
And so we would charge five dollars for the, no matter what. But in trying to stay with that, instead of saying a dollar every month adding that, it's much easier for us to say five dollars, you know, early in the year, trying to get all the dogs registered and then after that, it's a little higher, incentivizing it. Yeah.
Especially for us. We like to keep it simple. So that's how.
Other questions?
See a question? That's a weird one.
Um, do we, I, I, I realize that this is completely activity-based, but do we have any idea what the economic impact of this might be? I mean, is this going to increase fee collections by one percent, ten percent, a hundred percent?
Surprised if it was ten percent. Uh, it's going to be less than that, I would say. Um, most of these aren't changing dramatically. Like I say, I think we're actually probably on the side of saving more than what we're losing. Uh, things like mattress fees. We currently don't pay enough, and so we end up having to pay the county to take a mattress for somebody. So with this, we'll end up breaking even on it and.
Is it more if the tag's gone? Because, you know, that's.
Uh, no. So, yeah, I don't, I, I would say, I would be surprised if it got up to ten percent on the increase on that. Um, and those fees are so diverse and out there, it would be really hard for, we could, we could probably do an analysis where if you wanted an actual number.
Yeah, I, I don't think that's necessary for me. I about, I don't know about the rest of the council, but, uh, you know, the idea of, of covering our costs and making sure we're staying whole instead of going backwards, that's more to the point, I think, here uh, for this. So, are there any other questions? Hearing none, I would accept a motion that, uh, we would adopt ordinance fourteen hundred, creating a comprehensive fee schedule.
I'll motion that.
Councilman Wilkins moves. Councilman Jorgensen seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll pull the council. Councilman Bye?
Yes.
Councilman McCarty?
Yes.
Councilman Wilkins?
Yes.
Councilman Jorgensen?
Yes.
Okay, ordinance fourteen hundred is hereby adopted. Next item up is a resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero nine, establishing a reinvestment housing incentive district, R H I D, for Mennonite housing for the Orchard Ridge project. Mr. Styles?
Thank you, sir. So I sent you kind of the whole packet of stuff with the R H I D, but I did have, have the ad, we added the map in, uh, yesterday. So I'll actually kind of walk through what that map is and, and talk about how the district works. Uh, let me just pull it over here so you can see it. So this is the, the map district. Um, it's very, it's up beautifully.
Thank you.
I think Andrew did a great job of drawing that. Uh, so what it says, yeah, all the graphic design skills. So what you have to do when you do an R H I D, it's a reinvestment housing incentive district, formerly known as a rural housing incentive district. So what this does is basically sets up, it's kind of like, if you're familiar with a T I F, um, it's a taxing district that grabs the increments of, of property tax that are generated from the activity to go back and pay for the improvements that are made here. Uh, it only covers public improvements. And so what they're proposing here is, uh, just the water and sewer, the only pieces of that, which is about nine hundred and eighty-six thousand for this project, according to their estimates. So, uh, what we do is we go in and we do a, a model. Uh, well, Andrew went in and did a model and said, okay, well, based on what they're telling us these are praising at, uh, this is the increment that we can expect to generate. And so in nine years, in this case, uh, it'll pay off all that. The, the developer puts this in at their expense and then they recoup that money through, uh, an annual, effectively a rebate, I guess. Like a rebate check, is that how that?
Well, y- yeah, I mean, they, they're going to be installing this.
Right.
Improvements. And then the increment goes to the, goes to the tax of the county, just like every other property tax does, but the county will segregate it and send it to the city. And then we will hold it and the developer can come show us, look, we put these in and then we'll, we'll pay it back to them as reimbursement.
That's kind of the mechanism.
Yeah.
For how that works. In this case, you know, they could have put in the roads, but they wanted to keep those as private drives. Um, so that's totally fine. Uh, we actually, I kind of prefer that because then the maintenance and everything is on them, uh, with that. Uh, they're still building it to our standard. Uh, but what this is, is this creates the district. So anything within the boundaries of this district, according to the state law, is something that can be eligible for reimbursement within that. So the public infrastructure has to exist. Inside the district, there's a little bit of wiggle room within that, but we wanted to make sure we captured as best we could. So what this is saying here is that we're, we're giving them, the option that we have with them is for lots one through eight, which is the first phase of this. Uh, and then also the plan would be to vacate Orchard Drive, since it's no longer going to be a public street. And so that would revert half of that to the center line, reverts back to each side of the landowner. So the landowner to the north gets, uh, half of that. They get the thirty-five feet and. Makes sense? Yeah. Um, and so what we, we've got here is we've drawn the district to include to the center line. Again, we're not going to be responsible for their road project, but, you know, we want to make sure that it's inclusive of what that would be. So that's, that's kind of how we did that. Their actual infrastructure will be well within that district, I believe. Um, it'll tie off with our infrastructure, which is over here on Orchard Street. This is also Orchard Street, not Orchard Drive. And so, well, actually, this is Orchard Drive too. So this is confusing. I'm not sure why they plotted it this way. You get to pick the names when you do this. I don't know why you picked the same name. But we're going to vacate that and they'll be able to go to the center line and take that. And that'll be kind of their district here for phase one of this project. If they come back to phase two, um, the other piece of it would be up here. We would also vacate Hickory Street, since it's basically a closed development. We don't anticipate anything going or any need for public infrastructure going to the west from there. We would also vacate that so that they could build on that. And these lots here, which are ours, uh, Reserve C stays in place. And so you would be able to access it. For example, the farmer who is contracted for the remainder of this, will be able to access from the north side. So hopefully, if we get to phase two, um, that would be kind of how that would approach and they'll be able to flip around and, and do this. And they've got right now in the proposal, a temporary road on this side, thinking that they're going to do, um, phase two, which is good. I like that. I like that enthusiasm. You know, and then they register, redistribute the second half of that and it's continue with the private drive. They may want to look at another R H I D district. We'd have to go through this whole process again if we wanted to do that for a second phase, but, that would be something that, you know, the future council would want to look at too. So, uh, this is why the district is drawn this way. Everything that's included in there. Again, that'll be water and sewer. Estimates nine years, could be more, could be less, depending on what it prays is out at and what the generation of tax is. Uh, with any of these things, we have, um, we will have partners with the county. We'll have partnerships with the, uh, school district as well, because their portions of this are included in our R H I D district. So they will also be, because they, they benefit from this as much as we do. Uh, they will also be asked about that, uh, as to, you know, is this okay? They'll have an opportunity to comment back on that. What's the period for that?
Yeah, so, um, and notwithstanding what this resolution is, is titled, there's a lot, there's fair amount of process left. This is really stage one of establishing this R H I D. So and I'm getting to Matt's question. Um, but if you pass this resolution tonight, what happens is it gets published in the newspaper slash website. And then it goes up to the State Department of Commerce for approval. So they have it for however long it takes them. You know, just like U S D A. They, and, and, you know, hopefully, um, they take a look at it, agree with the findings that we make, and then send us an approval letter that says, yes, we're okay with this. Then we will schedule a public hearing, um, within a certain schedule set by law. Uh, we'll send notices to the county and the school district, um, letting them know about this, because as Matt mentioned, their, their, um, mill levies are affected by this, uh, increment in district as well. Um, and once we get through either approval from those two entities, or if they, um, don't object, and we get through the public hearing process, then there'll be a, another approval, um, that comes in front of the councils for the final establishment of the district and, and all of that will be done. So we are probably, this is step one, we are probably looking at it being, you know, the first quarter, end of first quarter next year before we're actually through all of the steps.
And, um, just to get some more background for it. So, excuse me. If they, um, project the, if they don't approve it, is it just, it goes back? They have to make whatever small corrections and they just send it back to the, uh, yeah, to the state. Like if the state doesn't approve it, it just gets sent back. They make the corrections and then just have to file.
Yeah, I, the state hasn't, has been pretty, the state has a policy right now, it seems, um, that they like these. They want these to be done. Um, so I haven't seen a lot of projections, um, come through unless it's just something that's way out of, way out of left field. Um, or if there's some legal issue with it, like they just decide that you, somebody, you can't put this district in this place under the law, which I don't think that's the case here. I mean, the city of Hillsborough qualifies under the statute, but you know, if you try to do it in the city of Wichita, well, they're too big and that, that's the reasons why they would reject it. Um, so I, I don't see any reason why they would. If they do and they give us a reason, then maybe that's something, you know, we, we can figure out what the solution is and, and go back to them, sure.
We did do a housing needs assessment, which is.
Yes, right.
That's part of, part of the requirements. It's not specifically, so, but there's, there's conditions you have to meet within the statute. Uh, and the housing needs assessment addresses each of those. And so we're able to say, okay, we've done it. We've got a fairly recent one. And we meet these, according to the statute, we meet these qualifications based on this study. So, uh, I feel like we're in pretty good shape with where we're sitting with it. As far as with the county and the school district, um, they have the ability to basically veto it, I mean, effectively.
Effectively. Um, if we send them a notice and we hear nothing, then we can proceed. If we send them a notice and, and um, they approve it, which some counties and school districts like to affirmatively say, yes, we can do that, then we're good. Um, but if either one of them, um, sends us official notice that we, we say no, we, we, um, object to this district, then that's it. We can't do it.
Alright. So the important thing to remember that from, from their perspective, uh, well, the school district's a little different. School district, uh, they, we cannot take the increment on their portion that's levied by the state of Kansas. So they have twenty mills that they have to levy for the state of Kansas. Uh, it only affects their local option, mill levy. So they're, right now, I think they're at forty, what did I say? And it's in the analysis, I think it's forty-eight. Um, so it would only affect those. Uh, the counties, it would affect the whole mill levy there. Uh, but it's only on the increment that's generated. So whatever this is generating right now stays put. They still get paid for that. They'll still get taxes on that amount. It's only the, any increments on the improvements. So what they're essentially doing is foregoing, collecting that tax revenue to help pay for the infrastructure and facilitate that being put in. So it's, you don't lose, you're just deferring. And that's kind of how those are set up.
And, and if everything goes to plan and let's say that the, you know, the total amount of the water and sewer, the nine hundred thousand and change that they're expecting and, uh, gets reimbursed within nine to ten years, then the city can say, we're turning this off.
Thank you.
What would be some of the reasons that any of those entities would say no?
Predominantly if they, if they don't want the, the increment of their, um, mill levies being used for that. And I mean, because it's, if, if the project is built anyway and those taxes are collected, it would go into the, into the tax revenues of those entities. The idea, of course, being behind any of these types of tax incentive districts that without this kind of incentive, this project may not or would not be built. In which case, nobody gets any tax revenues from it anyway. So that, that's the alternative. In which case, nobody gets any tax revenues from it anyway. So that that's the alternative theory.
Be the tax revenue in the long term, once it's built.
Absolutely, right.
What you would encourage.
Right, and once, yeah, once, once it's paid for and this thing is over, then you have a project that is on the tax rolls. And goes to all inappropriate taxing divisions.
Okay. Any other questions? Hearing none, I would accept a motion.
I think, maybe, hold on a second. Hold on a second. Finn, do you have a question?
Yes, uh, hi guys, can you hear me?
One sec, one sec, Finn, I gotta switch the audio. It's only coming through my computer. Right now.
Hi guys, can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you now.
Well, um, how are you guys doing?
Good, excellent.
I just have a a clarifying question because I don't know much about the reinvestment housing incentive district. Um, does, does this just mean it's like a sectioned off area where new housing will be built in the future?
Yeah, it's set in a district. I don't think I hit share on that, but I can show you what that district looks like, sorry. Yeah, hold on a minute. Uh, maybe I closed it.
I have the little map uh in the.
Okay, yeah, that's where the, that's where that would be. So the the increments are limited to that district that's in the blue outline.
And it's a specific project. It's the specific Mennonite housing project.
For this project, yeah.
So Mennonite housing will be built there in the future?
Mm-hmm, yeah, they're they're planning on building the.
Let's, let's, let's just be clear uh on on our, on our semantics here. Mennonite housing is the entity that's going to build these duplexes.
Right, right.
It's, it's a, it's called the Orchard Ridge Project is the name of the housing development. Who's being built or going to be built by Mennonite housing out of Wichita. It's not housing for Mennonite.
Right, yeah.
I just want to be clear. Yeah, so.
No discrimination.
No.
No, it's the housing for everybody.
Okay.
That qualifies.
Do you know uh when those duplexes are expected to be built by?
Uh, it's gonna depend on if this, this district goes through, that'll, that'll help change how they approach it. But it's supposed to be, they'll start construction once it's all approved, hopefully. Um, and then, you know, they'll be at the end of the year, probably, um, next year, I would say.
It's gonna be a twenty twenty-five project, Ben.
I'll send you a, 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 one of our things that we have that sort of talks about what those look like.
Okay, thank you.
Did we address your question?
Yes, that was.
Okay, very good, very good. Okay, are there any other questions? Hearing none, I would accept a motion to adopt Resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero nine. Establishing a reinvestment housing incentive district, R H I D for Mennonite housing Orchard Ridge Project. Councilman Jorgensen moves, Councilman McCarty seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll pull the council, Councilman Jorgensen.
Yes.
Councilman Wilkins.
Yes.
Councilman McCarty.
Yes.
Councilman By.
Yes.
Okay, and Resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero nine is hereby adopted and the mayor will sign. Next item up is consideration, and we've got a couple of these. Consideration of a storage space lease with Marion County Core Communities, Mr. Styles.
Yeah, this is a similar thing to what we did last week uh with the the childcare center. They've got space within the hospital and you can kind of see from the, from the map there where that is. Uh, both Marion County Core Communities and uh FACT have spaces in there too. Uh, so these are lease agreements that are requested from our insurance company, uh, to show that the building is being occupied in some way. Uh, same kind of situation as last time, it's a one dollar deal. I think the Marion County Core one will probably be a little shorter than the year that's on here, but um they'll be able to kind of.
They're planning to get rid of a lot of the stuff they have in there uh to the down home Christmas. They're having a garage sale, I think, at Old Town. And whatever the things are that they've got in there, I think they're trying to go ahead and get rid of those.
Yeah, so this may end up being a shorter term lease, but once it, once we kind of know that, we'll be able to fill in the, fill in the gap there. They'll, they'll be able to walk out of it, that's not a big deal. But um, yeah, so this, this is the same type of situation for both Marion County Core and for the FACT one. Uh, the only difference is I have a verbal uh approval from Marion County Core Communities. Uh, and you have the signed one from FACT, they've approved that one. So um, I'd be open to questions you might have, same deal as we'd had last week, or last meeting.
Questions? Hearing none and accept a motion to approve the storage space lease with Marion County Court Community. Councilman McCarty moves, Councilman By seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. And now we have the similar uh consideration of a storage space lease with families and communities together or FACT. Mr. Styles?
Yeah, same, same deal here. The only difference is you actually have the signed, uh, countersigned copy for that. So uh, we're recommending approval on this one as well.
Any questions? Hearing none and accept a motion to approve the storage space lease with FACT. Councilman Wilkins moves, Councilman By seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And we are now considering a renewal. Uh, reluctantly considering, I guess I should say, a renewal for G-Works municipal account software, Mr. Styles.
Thank you, sir. So yeah, this is a reluctant one. Normally, we wouldn't even bring this one up. Um, this one's just kind of, it's sort of standard operating. This is their, our accounting software that we use for general ledger, accounts payable, accounts receivable, uh, court utility billing, all the things, basically. So uh, it lives with us here on our server, so it's a program that we have here. They also have a cloud-based product, which I think is sort of the corollary to why it's being increased. Uh, but yeah, I went from twenty-two thousand five forty-three this year for twenty twenty-four up to thirty-seven thousand. Uh, fourteen thousand dollar increase, sixty-four percent in one year, which is pretty hard to swallow. Um, and that, that's, that's for G-Works and for Front Desk. Y- y- because it's so late in the game, it it's be really hard for us to make that transition. It's gonna be hard anyway to transition, frankly, it's never a fun thing to do to change your accounting supper. Uh, and I know Danielle doesn't love it, but uh, we also don't love paying that huge increase. So um, that's kind of where we're at. We're not thrilled about it. But um, basically how integrated we are, it'd be impossible to switch at this point. So uh, we have talked to another software company that's uh started up and a couple of people are kind of working with them. They don't have everything we need and they're not really established yet. So um, we're not comfortable saying let's jump in that boat. But uh, maybe next year, by the time they've had a little bit to work it out. And there's other options too, other than G-Works, Jayhawk, there's a couple others out there. But uh, you know, everybody kind of complains about theirs. Uh, we have very specific complaints about ours. Uh, overall, I think it works okay, it's just got some. E- everyone's got a little bit in, you know, little bits of things that are just weird and this one is is that way for sure. This wasn't really anticipated for our budget year, uh, but we have enough authority and and cash, obviously, to to make that work. But uh, we are reluctantly recommending that we move forward with this. We just wanted to bring it to your attention, uh, because it is such a significant increase. And we likely be coming to you maybe in the next year to say, hey, we want to switch.
Yeah.
Um, because that's not real sustainable.
So is there other options than doing a year?
No, no. To your, your license.
Stuck with it for a year.
Yeah, if we were gonna make a transition, we would probably look at doing it sometime. We'd probably start talking to people in the summertime, uh, because we'd want to have a crossover period there. Because I don't want to just drop one and pick up the other one.
Sure.
Um, so it would, we're talking next, next summer, early fall, we're gonna be talking about this again. But it is what it is right now.
Is there anybody from uh G-Works that would uh, would be available to explain their, their increase to the council?
Potentially.
Wonder if there's a justification there.
There was definitely.
Yeah, that cloud storage.
We can, we can see if they would love this, I'm sure they would. Yeah, they're, they're somebody who has reached out to us because they knew and they, they've had, we know from our connections. That there are other people who are not happy about how this has gone.
So, you know, the assumption being that uh, they may or may, with this action may actually, may not want our business. You know, going forward, I'd be interested to uh hear from them if that's the case.
I would feel more comfortable with that.
And if I may, um, since Matt, you did bring up maybe potentially switching to someone else anyway. Uh, is it okay to, I guess, give the go-ahead to at least talk to other people and other software companies and get some quotes made? Or is that?
Well, that's council direction and if the council feels like that's what we want to do, then that's direction we give staff.
Yeah.
We don't have to have a formal, formal action taken for that.
Yeah, I mean, I would love to direct you to. Uh, to, yeah, I mean.
Already looked.
That's, that's crazy.
Yeah, it takes a lot of work to develop software, but that's a pretty good jump.
Yeah.
You know, they must have worked extra hours.
Well, I, you know.
What I've heard is that they are, uh, as Matt mentioned in the staff report, trying to get their. Um, customers to move to the cloud-based version. And the increase has to do with them shifting their customers to that cloud-based version. The clerks that I've spoke with um are struggling. They uh, my understanding is that G-Works put out a product for this online platform before it was fully ready. And the bugs that other clerks are running into are really difficult and they're not getting the responses back that they need. And so they have, G-Works has pushed us to move to the cloud and said, you know, it would be the end of this year that you need to be able to move to that. And we said, no, we're not doing that.
They're like, why not?
There were enough of us, communities that said, we're not making that switch until we're hearing that others are having success. And so now I think that this is maybe their comeback to say, well, if you're not switching, we still have to pay for it on our end. So I think that that's why we're seeing that is because of of the conversion to that cloud-based.
So.
If it was to operate well, you know, I would be in, interested in staying with them if it was to operate well. It's just we have not experienced their cloud-based to operate seamlessly. I, I think no matter what, we should, we should do our due diligence if we're looking for another vendor. I, there are several that we would want to talk to.
I think that's a good idea. You know, if you had a lot of problems with it, then you'd have.
And we switched over, um, we went to their front desk, which is the customer-facing portal. We were one of their first ones to do that and uh, we're not gonna do that again, basically, because of that issue. I mean, it wasn't, wasn't quite ready for primetime as far as the user experience. And so there were things and, you know, when you're dealing with general ledger and payroll and, you know, those things, we want them to work. And, you know, they're finicky enough when they're living on our server, but, you know, in the cloud and then maybe not ready. Not a great recipe, so.
Now that, not only are we being affected, but a lot of other cities too, right?
Yes, so Matt and I both were on different listservs and so I'm on a listserv with all, many, many other clerks. And everyone's reporting the same increase, you know, we went up ten thousand. And so think the municipality our size, we're seeing this increase. There's municipalities with two hundred people that are seeing, you know, significant increases as well. And so um, that's, that's a drive to look at other, other options, whether we switch or not.
Well, I definitely would love to have somebody from G-Works.
Sure.
Come to address the council at, at their earliest opportunity.
I would be happy to invite them.
Looks like a poor business. I mean, you know, I understand why they're breaking, but still, it's kind of ridiculous. I mean, especially if you've got a lot of bugs in it, if it was perfectly working good or maybe just a few.
That's, that is a fair statement.
Now, they may, I, you know, given their, their uh behavior here, I'm not sure how soon we will see somebody. But uh, we can certainly make the request, right?
What's the deadline for you to renew?
Uh, we typically have, well, we have to let them know.
I don't, I don't think we can, I don't think we can defer the renewal. But I think, you know, I'm talking about going forward beyond this renewal.
Right, right, right.
That's, that's really what I'm referring to.
Yeah, I think you're kind of stuck holding your nose on this one and then.
Probably, I mean, there's no way we could not, we'd have to renew, I mean, if we wanted to get going, but.
Yeah, because I doubt.
Uh, negative.
That's a negative ghostwriter. Pattern is full.
Yeah. But do I understand from this that the cloud-based system is the same cost?
That's what it appears. Uh, that's kind of what, it would correspond to what they quoted us for that. Um, and so it's sort of a, a force move. I mean, they're, they're not telling us this is a cloud-based product, but it's roughly the same cost, so you kind of make that assumption.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, I would accept a motion to approve the G-Works invoice for twenty twenty-five licenses. And uh, I would make that motion while holding our nose.
I will reluctantly uh, motion that.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilman Wilkins, is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Jorgensen is seconding, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, hold your nose. Say aye, opposed. Motion carries, we will reluctantly um, go forward, but uh, probably not again. Unless they have some compelling story to, to share with us.
We'll see.
Okay, that takes care of that and we're into our discussion items. And uh, we're back again to talking about passing through credit card charges, Mr. Styles.
Thank you, sir. So this is something that came up earlier this year and we told you we'd bring it back when we started talking about rates. Um, though, it's just as a refresher, state law allows us to pass through our credit card uh processing fees. Um, that's a thing for all governmental entities that can do that. Um, we've been absorbing those fees since we started taking credit cards, it was a decision that was made back then. Um, and so we, we've kind of looked at that and said, okay, well, how much was that actually end up being? So uh, for twenty-three, it was about thirty, just over thirty-four thousand. Um, October of twenty-three to September this year, we were at thirty-five thousand. So I'm guessing we're gonna be close maybe to forty, that might be a little high uh by the end of the year, once we get it done. Um, so we do about twenty-one hundred transactions each month. Uh, six hundred and thirty of those are in person using cash or checks. Everybody else is using a different type of method, either credit card in person, uh, E F T, electronic transfer, other, others sort of electronic processing. Um, right now, our transaction fees, based on kind of the average and what we pay, is a little bit, about a one percent fee if you're gonna use a card online. And uh, one point seven percent if you're gonna use it in person. So that's kind of where it's at. That's what we're paying for it. So when we kind of look at the, the fee structure on this sheet I provided, that's, that's how they break that out. It's based on the card and the transaction fees and everything like that. So that's what they're charging us. Now, they simplify that if you want to pass that through to somebody uh as a customer. So if you're gonna do a customer, uh, Forte would charge them a two and a half uh percent convenience fee. And there's a minimum charge of a dollar ninety-five per transaction on that. Um, so basically, if you're spending less than seventy-nine dollars, you, you're gonna be paying that one, one hundred and ninety-five. Or one dollar ninety-five, excuse me, one dollar ninety-five cent fee regardless of how much it is. Uh, now, when you talk about um, our utility bill, there's not a lot of them that are gonna be under that. Um, so most people are gonna end up in that two and a half percent range. Um, when we talk about E uh, E checks or E F T transactions, which a lot of our, our online um, front desk customers. They're, they're either using a check or uh, the direct draft in E F T uh out of their account. So those are actually a little less expensive. Uh, those end up being a dollar seventy-five per transaction up to fifty thousand. Uh, I can tell you that we don't have a whole lot of fifty thousand dollar transactions uh that run through there. Um, there may be some instances when you have a commercial person doing that. And if that's the case, they get bumped into the second tier, they're paying three bucks um for that, for that privilege. So um, not a significant amount of money when you talk about what those end up being. Very few of those. Uh, so when we talk about passing that through, it's pretty common. I mean, if you've gone to Marion County, for example, passes it through, uh, when you pay your tags, if you want to use that, uh, state of Kansas does it. A lot of municipalities do it. It's, it's pretty common. It's almost expected. We actually had somebody say, I'm surprised you don't do it the other day, which, okay, well, that's fine. Many of the, we went out and looked at other providers, uh, just to say, all right, well, what's, what's two and a half percent compared to, Forte is what we use, but is there other option out there? Uh, two and a half percent seems to be about right, um, somewhere between two and a half and three and a half percent is kind of where we saw in the market. Staying with them simplifies this process for us. G works actually said that we can make that transition. Um, they just worked with Forte on that, uh, so it's not a huge deal. Originally, they were telling us we'd have to move to their payment system, which we were like, no, hard no. That, that we were able to work out too. So, um, I would note that, you know, when we have, when we pick up the fees, we do have a significant volume, obviously, that uses that. And that reduces our volume here in the office. Um, I don't think these fees are high enough to really change a lot of people's behavior. We might see more in person, but people who don't want to pay the fee, they want to pay with cash or check. I, I'm betting it's probably not a super high amount. Um, obviously, we don't want to get into taking more of those. We're able to effectively reduce a whole position, um, by not doing that and pushing more people online. Um, a lot of our people like to interact with us online. I think that's kind of a younger generational thing. If we were to look at the profile of someone who comes in and pays us, uh, it's going to be an older, older group of people that does that. So, um, you know, as that kind of changes demographically, there may be some changes to that too, but, um, I don't know, that seems to be the, the structure there. Forte, I think is, is pretty good. Um, we've worked with them. It seemed to be fair and in line with what the market's saying, so, uh, we don't really feel like this would be a real dramatic change for people. Uh, if there's some, this is obviously a discussion item, this, we're just having this talk right now. But if you wanted to make that, I think we could probably get it set up to go on January 1. If that's what you wanted to do, um, that would give us some time to kind of get a public awareness campaign out there, let everybody know who uses it, that this is happening. So, um, yeah, this, this is for the discussion. So this is what we're bringing back to you as we promised and, uh, so we would open it up and there's questions, we'll try to answer them for you.
Questions?
Bottom line, about $40,000 of savings by switching to that kind of a policy. For the city.
How many mills does that represent?
A lot of that's tied to utility though, so if you're going to convert it to property tax, about two mill. Not quite. That's not an insignificant amount of money.
But basically this means they're going to pay that two and a half percent to Forte. We're not going to see that. We're just going to see our full amount, correct?
Passes right through. That's an important piece of the education part. The city's not benefiting. We're not getting that money. Um, that's going to Forte. Yeah, they're paying, that's how they're paying for the processing.
A convenience fee model.
Right.
So like what, uh, Cash App and all these other apps do.
Yeah, exactly. Yep, that's exactly how that works. Venmo, all that stuff there.
Get it.
Got it. If you're familiar with Square. That type of thing. They actually charge about three and a half percent.
Hey. So, um, what's the desire of the council? We want to move forward with this? And, uh, and, um, I guess, you know, technically we could go ahead and, and move today or we can defer to the next meeting. It's up to you guys.
I, I would not be against, um, moving forward with this. I mean, like Matt said, it's not an insignificant amount of money, um, that the city would, would, would not be. Sorry, my words here. It's not an insignificant amount of money here. I mean, roughly $40,000, I mean, that's roughly two mills that we wouldn't necessarily have to raise to cover it. So I, I'd be fine with it. And at least I can't speak for the majority of people that do pay, uh, online. I pay online. I, I mean, I will pay the fee. I'm perfectly fine with it. Um, and I think a lot of, like you said, younger people, I think, are just accustomed to paying the convenience fee. And at the end of the day, they really don't like going in public and waiting in lines. So, you know, in order to pay in person, so I don't anticipate a lot of the younger people moving and coming and paying with cash and taking up your guys' stuff.
I think we also need to be very, very, very extra clear that this fee is not going to the city. Cause I can see, I can already, I can already hear people griping. That they need to know that this is not going to.
Well, you just go tell that person, you know, what it, what it is.
I will. Oh, I will make sure to tell them. Just wanted to make that very clear that this is not going to the city.
Yeah, no way it's twisting their arm to use it either.
It's true. We do still accept cash and check. Do you want to come in and write us a check?
Has anybody bought checks lately?
I still have the pack of checks that I got when I opened up my bank account years ago. I, I don't touch them.
22,000 of them in the last 20 years.
They have, they have gotten fairly expensive.
They are pretty.
Yeah, and, and I do think that if people would try to say, oh, well, I'll just pay with the check or cash. A lot of people don't want to go to their bank and pull out that amount of cash anyway. And with the check, like you mentioned, the check fees, I think they'll see that and go, well, two and a half percent ain't bad, so.
But we do know that, uh, certain part of our community, the Mennonite community is a very frugal person. And so it will be interesting to see making this change if it increases the amount of cash and checks that just come into the office. If that happens, what kind of, I mean, how much more processing burden does that put on you if it increases by?
I guess, I suppose I would anticipate the demographic that we're talking about that would want to make that switch would pay by check and not by cash. Um, we have the night job with mail, you know, there's a lot of options. And I don't anticipate it would take up that much more time. Frankly, I think we might see it increase activity and then, and then decline back off. But I can continue to run some of those charts like I've done and we can watch how that goes.
Watch it. We get all that data, so.
I guess in, in that vein, if we do see that it does create a significant bump up for you guys in terms of processing time and whatnot, what would it be in order to, I guess, go back to the city absorbing that? Is this a done deal or is it a time period or?
I don't think it is. That's a fair, I don't know what that would look like. I would imagine you can probably go back.
Well, you know, again, we can all, we're going to talk about utility rates here in a minute. You know, we can always, uh, address it there. You know, so it's either do it this way or do it another way, but the cost, the costs are the costs.
Yeah.
You know, and I think we all know that this is, this is, this is not going to avoid, there's no way to avoid financial costs, unfortunately. It just, where are you going to pay for it? Are you going to pay for it on your tax bill or are you going to pay for it on your utility bill?
Good point.
So, that being the case, you know, does the council want to take action on this? Or do we want to defer till our first meeting in December?
Well, I'm, I'm fine taking action. Uh, I don't know how the rest of the council feels. If you want to defer, I'm, I'm perfectly fine with that, but.
I have no problem with. Take care of that.
Yeah, it seems.
Then I would accept a motion to adopt the, uh, the, um, what are we calling this again? The credit, convenience fees for credit card payments to the city?
I'll motion and I'll put my name out there for.
All right. Is there a second? Councilman McCarty seconds. Okay, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That is taken care of. We'll cross that off the list and move on to a discussion of utility rate changes, Mr. Stiles.
Uh, sorry, Mayor, if I could just say one thing real quick. Is it too late to just, it's no, it's just a statement that I'd like to make.
Well, you're more than welcome to make a statement.
Okay, um, at least when I talked to some community members months ago about the issue, um, a lot of them said that they were fine paying the fees. So again, I don't know how that translates on the surface, I mean, on the whole. But I think at least the gist that I got, people are okay paying just like the, for the convenience.
All right. Okay, we're moved on to a discussion now on utility rate changes, Mr. Stiles.
Thank you, sir. So this is again, a part of our strategic plan is one of the things we committed to is reviewing rates on a more regular basis. Uh, what that does is allows us to make more incremental changes versus, uh, the eye-popping changes that we, cities tend to get, not just us, uh, cities tend to get into, you ignore your utility rates for several years, uh, which is sort of the habit. So what we've done, each year, we kind of come back in November and say, all right, well, where are we at? What do we need, um, with utility adjustments and what needs to be looked at? So, uh, this year when we went back through and did it, I sent this out yesterday, so I apologize for that. I just hadn't had time. Ran out of time and I had to pull the commercial stuff, I was working on that over the weekend. So we were able to get that done and kind of give you some idea of what we're looking at. So what we've got here this year is, uh, water, trash and recycling, uh, are things we should be considering. Uh, trash and recycling, pretty straightforward. Uh, those, those costs are almost exclusively driven by equipment and, and capital costs. Running a trash business is not cheap. Uh, we have basically two truck, we have three trucks that we run, but two trucks are the primary ones. Those things are out every day, uh, eight, nine hours a day. Uh, they're running, they're moving heavy loads, uh, they're rolling back and forth to the transfer station, they're picking up tons of trash. Um, and recycling on recycling days. So there's a lot that goes with that and that, you know, regularly we're having to do a lot of maintenance on these trucks. We bought a new truck, a, a new used truck last year, uh, and there's still maintenance that has to happen with that on a regular basis. We just had to do a, a wiring harness replacement that was like $6,000. Yeah, so it's like, you know, the, it's still just pieces that, you know, and that was, we were hoping to get away with a little less, but did not work out that way. You know, so we've, we've got a lot of maintenance with those, uh, they, they run non-stop. Um, we actually just paid off the 2019 truck that we bought new. And so there's, that's, that's a good thing because we were able to replace the other truck with that payment effectively, which would change. But, uh, you know, we're still having a lot of maintenance. Thank goodness for this and that farms. They do a great job with us and they're very good to work with. They're not gouging us or anything, but it's just an expensive piece of equipment to run and maintain. Uh, and when you have two of them, that just doubles it up. So, uh, we see a lot of things with like death fluid, hydraulic fluids, tires, uh, tires for those things are, you know, $6,000 a set. So, uh, it's not, they're not cheap to run. And so when you're running them that much, it really gets to be, um, gets to be an expensive endeavor. Of course, you have labor in there too, and those guys work, those guys work really hard. Uh, they even work on holidays. They have to come out and they do, uh, they do commercial routes on holidays because the commercial doesn't stop. So, uh, we've kind of went through that. Yes, sir, we were just talking about that this morning. And so, um, those, those are pieces of it too. That's not the biggest chunk, but it's always this other consumable pieces and that. Uh, and then we have some reinvestment that we got to make. We need to buy more poly carts. Uh, we got to, I have a $7,000 request on my desk for poly carts. Uh, but now we're going to hold off on that for a little while. Uh, dumpsters, same way. Those things have to be replaced every once in a while. We really haven't been doing a ton of that. Um, so that's something that we need to look at too. So we've got about 25, 30,000 and, and just those capital costs that we need to do. Uh, we've been able to move them over to the old gorgeous dairy in our AMPI building. So there's a little bit of cost with updating that building, but, uh, the hope is that moving those trucks inside and having a place that can be worked on, we, we can treat them a little bit better. Uh, and I think that's worked out well, uh, it's just, it is what it is. And so when we look at the, the cost with that, um, we looked at kind of what that needs to be, where we kind of want to be financially on that. And so what we came up with was, uh, residential rate increase for $2 per month on the trash sides. That puts us at 1675. Uh, commercial is another two, we went with the same $2 per month increase on that. Uh, when we look at kind of the cost schedule, I know there's a little bit daunting to understand, but, uh, we do, we charge that based on volume, uh, with the trash. So you've got a whole list of things there on the sizes of dumpsters we have. And then with trash, we also say, how many times a week do I got to pick that up? So if you do more week pickup, you know, that's the number of times per week when you look at that chart, like what's that look like? So what we do is we just take that rate for the baseline 95 gallon, uh, 95 gallon poly cart and then. Deal with recycling, um, recycling rate 150 is what we'd be looking at for that, what we were proposing. Uh, and then again, you just multiply that out. We only do recycling once a week. There's no four times a week on recycling, although we do have some customers that we end up doing them a couple of different times. Depends on it is. I mean, there's some that have a higher volume at different times of day and we'll work with them. We don't double charge them or anything for that, so we're pretty good with that. But, um, that is a change because before, two years ago, we were just charging a flat rate for everything. So if you had a six-yard, uh, recycling dumpster, you were paying the same as the residential person was paying at their house, which did not seem to make any sense at all. So one thing I would say with recycling, uh, it's, it's technically set up as a, a secondary fee tied to that. When, when we move to, uh, single stream recycling, they set it up as a fee that you have to pay. Can't opt out of it, um, but you ha, you have to take it. You don't have to take the cart from us, but you have to take the fee. Um, and so that's kind of sits as its own thing and that's another piece that you have to amend when you do this. But, um, so those are the two pieces with trash that we, we looked at and said, okay, well, what's that? What's that actually mean for us and what that would do from a financial impact is it's about 40,000 annually. So that would get us in this position where we could, uh, reinvest in those, you know, the poly carts and the dumpsters and get that on a more regular routine. Also cover that maintenance on those trucks and we got to be thinking about replacing those trucks. It seems weird that you're talking about replacing a truck that you bought last year, but it's already, it's already a five-year-old truck. And we're, like I say, we run them all the time. So you have to be thinking and putting money away in order to, to make that replacement at some point in the future. So that's a pause there.
So, just, just for those that are relatively new to the council, when we bought the first side load truck and the original poly carts, we looked at the cost of, of, uh, of, uh, subbing that out, you know, contracting with another company to do it. And at that time, I don't know what it is today, but at that time it was about six and one, six and a half a dozen, okay? And, uh, the issue there that kind of tipped it, the balance is the service level that we can provide our customers as opposed to a contracted service. The service level is much harder. If somebody has an emergency or their trash didn't get picked up or whatever, you know, those are the calls that come into City Hall on a regular basis. I, I, I would, I would suggest that we probably get more calls regarding trash.
Yeah, that's probably three to one.
And so if we're getting those now, you know, and we contract that out, I think it's fair to expect that we'll see even more volume, significantly more volume of people calling in about trash, so.
You have a convenience level that you can control too.
Yeah, right. Yeah, but, but you, but you're right, Mike. There is, that's absolutely right.
Mike said if they miss something or something.
Yeah, we can, we're flexible. We can figure it out and send it back. Go back and, and, and take care of it. But, uh, it's hard to do that when you contracted it out. Because what they do is if you say, hey, we need you to come back, then they charge us for it. They don't do it free. So, you know, the, the, the option, you know, of, of, of doing it or not doing it is, you know, do we, do we ask staff to go out and see about what it would? Cause I guarantee you, there are several companies, a couple of local, nicely for one, they will be here in a heartbeat. You know, and, and, you know, they would, they would be here to tell you the, the, tap the benefits of, of their product. But again, you know, it's just one of those things that it's, that it's just really hard to turn over control of that to somebody else.
So, and, you know, if I can just further clarify, this rate increase isn't to make the city more money. It's just for maintenance of the trucks that we use every single day.
Yeah, maintenance of trucks, replacement of poly carts, and then effectively we're planning for the replacement of that truck again.
Yeah.
Um, so that's, you know, there is a little bit, it, maybe not as direct as saying it's just paying for maintenance, but we are setting aside some money so that we can pay for that truck.
You know, and again, if I, I, I appreciate that the city is willing to provide the trash service. Because living in Manhattan, I can tell you, there were multiple times where they were like three, four days late or they didn't show up. And, and you know, you were just stuck. So I think, you know, the city taking it on and being flexible with customers. I think that's, you know, very admirable and I would hate to lose that, especially because like you said. If we do go to contract and they don't pick it up, the, you know, citizens are gonna say, they're still gonna call us because, well, this is. This is the city, you know, city didn't pick up the trash. So we're gonna catch the heat for something that the contractors didn't do. And so, yeah, no, keeping, keeping the control in our hands, I think will always be a better, better solution.
And I would say from a rate perspective, this is still cheaper than if typically, uh, you can't say for sure until they give you a proposal, but. I would say this is probably under, we're still under what we'd probably get commercially. Uh, so when you do that, when you do bid those out, what you do is you're, you're basically franchising it. You're bidding out the franchise so that they can pick up the. Trash and you can do that a lot of different ways. Uh, but they're, they're guaranteed to get usually ju- you know, it can be your residential and your commercial. Some people split those off. Whatever, there's a different way to do it, but they'll come in and they'll bid that and then they'll say, oh, well, we'll also throw in. Community cleanup day, or we'll drop a dumpster, or we give you free trash service at the city hall and all the things, right? But I can tell you that based on the commercial rates they're out to right now, I don't think that they're gonna beat what we've got it for right now. Uh, even with the increase, I don't think that that's where that's at. So I think we're still pretty competitive.
Key would be the maintenance and preventative maintenance that keeps your costs down. And if you're putting them trucks inside, set when they're being used. The trash trailers for the county are so corrosive and there's no maintenance. They're not ever washed out. They sit outside. Except when they're being loaded inside. And that, that's something that we need, when they're eighty grand anymore. And they're only lasting five years, there's room to double the life of them trailers with main, proper maintenance in my opinion. And still save money in the long run.
Yep.
That's the key to any maintenance or equipment is maintenance.
Okay, ma- this, any other questions regarding, uh, trash and recycling? Okay.
All right, so water is the one that's a little bit rougher. Um, what we did with that, so water's kind of. Been on this trajectory where it's gotten, the cost of outstripped our ability to, to raise with the current rate structure. So. Uh, we've got improvements that we're doing, the K D H pilot study, uh, that might eventually lead us to a place where we're decreasing the chemical use. That's the goal. Uh, to decrease the chemical usage and therefore the cost. Uh, but we haven't really realized that yet. Of course, we're doing the, the piping part right now. And there's an injection quill with that so that we'll be able to add different chemical later and different pressures in the process. Um, as that goes through, we may see some more of that. Um, right now it really remains pretty steady and the water quality at the reservoir is not getting better. I can tell you that and no one again wants to take, take responsibility for that until somebody at the state says, yes, that's a great idea. That probably will not happen. Um, and so our costs continue to go up, especially on the chemical side, ten, twenty-five, ten to twenty percent a year. Uh, we've kind of seen that pretty consistently. Uh, I can't really tell you what it's gonna be. It's an uncertain environment with that, but. Um, and we have other increases too, so that that's just the treatment side, but, um. You know, the wa- the raw water contract is, it's set now that we, we had a sweetheart deal that was four years fixed straight, which was awesome. Uh, but now it goes up about three and a half percentage each year, so we can expect that to continue going up there. Uh, of course, we have other things tied into that too. We have labor and distribution. Uh, if you've been out to the water plant facility, you're gonna see there's things, um, we've talked about the, the control panel, for example. There's capital things that are starting to come to, because we've, we've outstripped the useful life of a lot of the pieces within the water treatment facility. So. That's gonna get more expensive as it moves forward. Um, it's just, we gotta be thinking about how we're gonna replace some of these things. Cause they are not cheap pieces of infrastructure. The tendency is to, to kind of wait for them to deteriorate to the point where you have a larger project. And then you go out and apply for a K D H E loan, or you do some other type of thing. Uh, I don't know that that's the best choice. That's, that's how it's been done. Uh, but I think maybe setting some aside so that we can, you know, make some incremental improvements. Uh, I don't know that you need to do a full-on project. But, you know, setting aside some for those capital improvements is gonna be really important. Uh, one of the things I mentioned, I know a couple of months ago. Uh, was conservation tiers. So what that means is that K D H E and, and. Uh, the FDA are, are kind of pushing people into a conservation, um, mindset. So what that means is that. Uh, water is a finite resource, right? And we're not getting any more of it. In fact, parts of the state, there's a lot less of it. Um, and so that makes it more and more expensive and more and more valuable. Uh, we don't have a, uh, an issue with quantity here so much as we have a quality issue. Uh, but that just compounded even more too, though. I mean, and it continues to do that. So that makes it where it's harder for us to. To, you know, treat that water and it's more and more complicated, more and more dirty, for lack of a better word. We still have a lot more costs tied to that. So. Um, K D H E is pushing people into that conservation mode. So I told you I was gonna give you a conservation tier. So what I tried to do was make a conservation tier that was the least impactful for people. Uh, right now we have just a flat tier. So you buy a thousand gallons of water at six, six dollars and fifty-eight cents. Um. It's not tied to that. So what that, um, what a conservation tier does, it says this amount is. This, this set amount is gonna be this amount. And as you go up higher and consume more, those increments get more expensive as you go. The idea is that you set up a financial incentive in order to, you disincentivize somebody to using that a large amount of water. Uh, it kind of doesn't, it doesn't always make sense. Um, from a financial perspective, you're encouraging people not to use your product, but. Uh, you wanna, you wanna make sure that you have it. You're, you're basically ensuring that that resource still exists. Um, so that's, that's sort of the thought process with how I set that up and sent it over. Um, and then we've got those tiers and I'm looking at what I sent you. It doesn't seem that the chart was attached to that. Did you guys not get a chart with that? Okay, well, let me pull the chart up so you can take a look at it. Uh, so what we did is we pulled all the data from the last year, um, and just kind of organized it as to what that would look like. And we modeled it out. We split, we split, um, commercial and residential. So that we would have two different kind of structures because they use vastly different amounts of water. Um. Sorry about that. Share that, so our people online can take a look at it too. Okay. So this is. What our current rate is, uh, six fifty-eight for a thousand gallons, twenty-nine dollar base charge, the same for commercial and residential. But they are split out in our system, so it's easier for us to figure out what it is. Uh, so what I would propose is increasing the base charge for both. Uh, I did increase the base charge on the commercial side a little bit more, cause honestly, it's disproportionate amount of what they pay. Uh, given the utility bill. Um, and you can see by the tiers, like where people shake out. The average residential user uses about fifty-eight hundred gallons, uh, in a given month. Um, and so that, that's average throughout the year. That goes up and down depending on the seasons. Um, so we, we kind of split those out. I tried to make those tiers as generous as possible. Uh, seven thousand is, that's gonna capture, I say, I did the numbers on how many that actually captures. Um, it's about seventy-five, seventy-seven percent of customers fall into those first tiers. Uh, and then, you know, as you go up, you get, and we get to the, the third tier in both these tier structures, you get up to ninety-five percent of the customers. There's only a few outliers that are routinely over those amounts. Um, there's hardly anybody in the residential that gets above that unless you're talking about a, a congregant or a, our apartment complex, something like that. Those fall into that rate structure and they're still, you know, making, they, they get into that. There's not really nobody, the average homeowner doesn't get into that. Um, so that's kind of how we structured those, seven thousand fifteen, fifteen thirty, thirty plus. Um, the only time I really see somebody get into thirty plus again is like a, um, an apartment complex where we do have people who have leaks. And what boggles my mind is that they can spend, I mean, they, they can run. A quarter million gallons through, uh, something and we let them know they have a leak. We tag that anytime we see it. Uh, and then they don't, they won't fix it for like two months. It's the strangest thing. We've had a couple of cases where. People are running these massive bills and, and a residential property, we tell them, you have a leak, you have a leak. And then finally, we basically have to turn them off. Because they won't fix their leak. Uh, and of course, they're not wanting to pay that bill either, but. It is what it is. And same with the commercial, we had a couple, um, couple of odd things, uh, within the last year. Uh, one of them was the Harrington Hospital property. Uh, they have a massive water leak. They didn't catch that for like three billing cycles, even though we let them know. Um, and so they had a big bill. Uh, they were the biggest user for a couple of months, which is a little unusual, uh, honestly. So. Uh, yeah, so we structured the tiers there. You can kind of see what we put it on the, the price changes. Six fifty-eight to six seventy-one. And then I, I kept the tiers, you know, the prices and the tiers. There's two percent difference between each of these. Um, so at the end of the day, uh, someone in the commercial side is looking at about seven percent, uh, increase over what they normally do. It's a little bit more on the, uh, residential side because the base rate change impacts them a little bit more than, than a regular commercial site. So. Um, what you could expect to see from somebody on, uh. I did that. Matt, I'm a little lost in my notes. Uh, about seven, sixty-seven dollars a year on the residential side. Uh, commercial, there's such a huge variance there. It's about seven percent for most folks, but. Uh, we honestly, we have people in the commercial zone that are. Half a million gallon users and then we have some that are ten gallon users. So we have a huge, huge range. I, I would hesitate to even tell you that it, it, it's, it works out to about seven percent when you average it all together, but. Obviously that impacts people disproportionately. So if you're on the higher end of the spectrum. Um, the people on the higher end are, are some of our manufacturing companies. Uh, Tabor College has a couple of accounts that are on the higher end. Um, uh, Salem Home. Parkside Homes, some of those accounts are fairly large on some months. Uh, again, it's seasonal. Um, there's not. There's not a whole lot of rhyme or reason sometimes as to how those shake out, but some of them were consistently in there. But again, we hit about ninety-five percent of those people. Out before you get to that last tier. So we tried to structure that in a way that is least impactful, but. Um, with this proposed rate structure moving to that, of course, it's a, it's a pretty significant change from where we're at now with the flat rate. But we could estimate about a hundred and thirty thousand, uh, in revenue if everything stayed the same. Um, and so what that puts us in position to do is, is to pay for those costs, of course, with the chemicals and some of the actual operational pieces. Uh, and then start putting aside some money for some of these capital improvements that we know we need to do, uh, that we just haven't been frankly. So. Um, this, this is kind of just a starting place for this. If you think that's too aggressive, we could move that down a little bit. Um, I'm not glued to this rate at all, but it, this is where I think that we would be in the best position long-term. Uh, we probably wouldn't need to look at it for a little while too, which is, is kind of nice. Of course, we would look at it every year, but. Uh, you don't wanna, you know, keep socking people with increases every year. So. Uh, this puts us in probably the best financial position without being too extreme. But again, if you felt like this was a little too aggressive, you could always back it down. We could rerun those scenarios to find something that you like a little bit better. Um. Yeah, so that's, those are kind of the proposals as they are written right now. Um, if you had specific questions, I mean, I can, I can actually run your individuals. If you like to see what that would look like for your individual bill. Yeah, if you knew somebody, I can kind of, we can kind of profile people. I hate to say it that way, but. You know, you, if, if you had concerns about the little old lady who lives by themselves, I can, I can give you kind of what that average little old lady looks like. Um, if you have concerns about the family of, of, you know, ten, I can run that too. Um, if you wanted to know what the impact is for Tabor, we could probably go through them. They have seventy-five meters, so. Uh, it would take me a little while, but we could do that. Um. But I, you know, I think this is probably the most equitable way to look at this. Um, of course, you don't have to do the, the tiered rate either. I'm, I'm advising that because I think that's where K D H E is gonna push us eventually. And I didn't, I didn't really do much with the, with the rate for Peabody, but we want to look at that too. Usually anytime we. Change our, our residential rate, we look at what Peabody gets charged. They have a wholesale agreement with us too, so we try to kind of match those things up. Um, I think ultimately what we're looking at in Marion County is some sort of collaborative effort. We already do water for Peabody. Uh, it makes sense that we could do that. We, we're sized to do that for Marion. We're sized to add on the, uh, some of the rural water areas. If that's something they wanted to do, that would be a partnership effort. Um, how that looks up to, up for discussion, but. Um, you know, I think the state is looking that way. There's funding for those type of projects. That's really where they want to see us. Um, the last time we did a major project, they actually encouraged that. They did a study that said that, you know, we could run a line to Marion and. They would help pay for it, but it, you know, it just didn't, just never materialized, how that works. So, uh, I think. Switching over to this rate, even if you don't like to how this is, I think it's still important that we look at the conservation tiers. If you don't want to change those, it's fine, but. Um, I think that would be important to look at doing that and then. You know, however you want to start planning for some of those resources, we need to be taking, thinking about that too. If you want to continue with the way we do it, where we just kind of let things go. And then do a big project, totally fine with me. Um, but I think that we're, we're still gonna need some money in the interim. So, uh, this is kind of based on that revenue working backwards from that. So, uh. I've been talking a long time and I'll back off and let you, I'll, I'll let you ask questions.
Can I ask one? Like on my water rights, untaxed on all metered water, the feedlot, and it's just a few cents a gallon. Yet where I take it times last year, thirteen gallon gallons, it's a sizable. Is that, do the cities, or would you have that same state water tax to pay?
Uh, it's not, it's not the same. Um, we pay, um. The, our, our contract is with the Kansas Water Office for the raw water that comes out of Marion Reservoir. Uh, so we have kind of a take or pay arrangement with them, where we have to pay them a certain amount for what we take. And then even for what we don't take, we have to pay a little bit for that too. So it works sort of the same way. Um, but it's structured.
What I know costs me.
Yeah, well, we actually do have some water rights too. We have wells that we use at the golf course and a couple of other places. We do have a similar kind of situation with that. But it's not our main source.
I mean, the average person in my industry, not being a, a large federally sized facility, doesn't have to put up with any of that.
Right.
We pay a yearly feed and.
Yep.
Fill out meter reports and.
Yeah, we pay about.
We used to come out and do it for nothing and now we pay them four hundred and fifty dollars and just send them emails. And it's gotten to be.
Still have to submit those too.
And then by the time you put the water tax on there, it is a sizable tax.
There's a clean water fee that we collect and pay back too, so.
Okay, any questions from the council?
Oh, I don't have any questions, but more so just, I mean, Matt, if, I mean, if you've ran the numbers and if you believe that. You know, this is what we need to, you know, for capital improvement and just staying ahead of things. I mean, from what you said, it looks like. Um, state might be pushing towards a model like this anyway, so this will just be getting ahead of it. And already having, you know, the system in the works. So, I mean, I, I think it. Um, I think I would just like to see, you know, just the numbers of how you said it would affect, you know, certain people, just so I can. Have an idea of that, an idea of that, but I mean, otherwise, I mean, I don't really have much input in regards of. Changing this unless somebody else is.
So I think what you outlined here, at least what it looked like to me, when I kind of. Did some simple math was on, on average about a ten dollar per month increase on the average person's bill. Would be the financial impact, hundred and ten per year. Um, a little less than ten dollars a month. Is that kind of what we'd be talking about?
Somewhere in that ballpark, depending on what you use. Uh, if you stack them in, yeah.
Yeah, for trash, recycling and water, yeah, yeah, for all, all those.
Battery, battery problem.
Oh, yeah, you get to see all my fun things when I do this. I'm just pulling up the agenda so I know what I'm talking about. Sorry.
You good?
I'm good. We're good to go. You can start anytime you want to. I'm just kidding.
Again, apologies to those that were online. We had a little technical difficulty. Um. We are, we have finished up our conversation on, uh, utility rate changes and we'll, uh. Have been, Matt's been given some instruction to run some scenarios on the water. Rates and, uh, for, uh, our next meeting. So now we will move to a land bank meeting. And I will call the, uh, meeting of the Hillsborough Land Bank to order. We have two items to address this evening. First is approval of minutes of our October fifteen, twenty twenty-four meeting. Which included, uh, Mr. Bennecke and Mr. Bovar. We're both here at our last meeting. And, uh, so everybody received copies of the minutes. Any questions regarding the minutes? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion to approve the minutes as submitted. Councilman McCarty moves. Councilman by seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We have one item of business and that is to approve, uh, mowing vouchers. To Plentert Mowing Services for fourteen hundred and seventy-five dollars. Any questions? Are we closing in on our final mowing bill for the season?
Be it.
Okay. All right. If there are no other questions, I would accept a motion, uh, authorizing payment of the, uh. Plentert Mowing Bill of fourteen hundred and seventy-five dollars. Councilman McCarty moves. Councilman by seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And now. For something totally different, we had the city administrators report.
Sure. Okay, a couple of things, strategic planning. I just want to thank everybody for coming to that last week. And it was a long meeting, but I thought we did some good work there. I'm gonna have those notes and draft stuff. Out for consideration here. Um, hopefully this week and get everything kind of going for that. Uh, trying to look at, look down the line. I'm not sure if we'll have an opportunity to get another meeting in by the end of this year, but, um. We'll be able to do some, some good work, I think, with that. I gotta get with Colin on some things too. So, uh, hope to have that out. You'll have that. By Thanksgiving hopefully. So you kind of see what we talked about and have some draft language for a few things and felt like it went pretty well. So.
Yep.
We'll be in good shape. Uh, some grant update stuff. Uh, Kelly and I have been working on several grants to kind of close out the year. We did an interview with one oh five, K State one oh five on the grant request for the bowling alley stuff. They really liked it, more enthusiastic about it. So we're optimistic that we'll get that one moving forward. Uh, we also did another seed grant application. That's the one we use for Dale's Supermarket Floors Project. Um, we actually threw one in for Rhubarb Market. They fall under the. Uh, food retail qualification. So, uh, they've been talking about expanding into that East Stream. If you've ever been in there, there's kind of a door. Um, it doesn't look like there's anything, but there's like a whole room to the back there. Uh, so they've been talking about, uh, expanding that, adding HVAC, um, a roll-up garage door. Uh, an entry door. Uh, I think ultimately they wanted to expand some of their food offerings and stuff. This would basically be for seating and for some other things. So. Uh, we're hoping to get that form too. We'll see how it goes. We've had pretty good luck with that. Um. And we also met with Chad from the Community Foundation about their grant cycle that comes open in January. So we're gonna have some things with that. Uh, so we're moving forward with several of those grant opportunities and we've got a few more that we found today, uh, for rec stuff. So we're gonna move on those. Uh, taped a new episode of Coffee with Mayor, uh, with Tim and Alisa Anru over at the Rhubarb Market. That was a pretty fun conversation.
Was.
Yeah. Got to do some new stuff with that too. So, uh, normally that would come out on Black Friday, but, uh, we're moving it to this Friday. So. Be able to catch that one week earlier. Enjoy that for the holidays. Have a good time.
Right.
Yeah, it's good stuff. Uh, vehicle sales, I actually got a misprint on this one. It didn't start today. It actually ends tomorrow, uh, our first one. So. Uh, if you're interested in buying a city vehicle, you need to get in there and get it done tomorrow morning. Uh, if, I don't know where we're at right now, but. We had several bidders when I pulled that, pulled that report. Um. Currently a little low on some of the prices, but I think we're actually, we're a couple of them, we were exceeding what we were thinking we were gonna get from Enterprise. So we're already ahead, uh, as far as I'm concerned on that. Uh, health insurance savings report, got that for October. We've done really well this, this plan year, at least this short part of the plan year. Uh, thirteen thousand for the month, well, almost fourteen for the month. We've got almost, we've got over fifty-three thousand for the year. Um, and then, you know, as, as we compare that with the other, we got a premium increase from Kment, uh, three point six six percent, which is very good. Uh, compared to what the market was, which was nine and a half percent. So, uh, we're saving about eighteen thousand dollars there to just using that Kment plan. So I think that's been a good transition for us. Again, we have an eighteen month plan, um, when we swapped out those. So employees are able to go from, uh, July of. This year up to the end of next year. So we move the calendar year. Uh, but that's been working out fine. We haven't had a huge utilization. There's not been a big. Push. Uh, we will have open enrollment on the fourth of December. So. Uh, they'll have an opportunity to change a few things, but not their health coverage because it's, it's a eighteen month plan. So they don't get to change that, but they'll do be able to choose. Uh, their F S A basically and some, we're gonna reiterate some things to them. Uh, I got the October bill for K P P. So the good news with that is that, uh. Our, our usage is up, um, from this time last year. So that's a good thing. Uh, E C A, we saved a whopping five hundred and twenty-six dollars, which. Eight, still five hundred and twenty-six bucks. Uh, total bill is about one hundred and fifty thousand. Uh, chili cook offs tomorrow. I've got. Barney and Blake are judges. I still need one more. Are you good?
Good.
You're good. All right. I got my three.
I'm here for the summer.
Well, y'all can come in if you want some chili. We have five competitors, I think. Um.
Nice.
I think so. I think it's five. And we'll have some awesome cinnamon rolls too. So be a good time. Uh, I hope so. Uh, and then we just got some reminders on stuff with our, our holidays and things. I'll get out the week of Thanksgiving, so next week, um. You call Danielle if you have any problems with my mountain. So, uh, and then that is everything I had. Um, yeah. So if you have any questions about any of that.
Any questions?
Nope.
All right. We're now to our final opportunity for public comment. Is there any other public comment?
I'll raise my hand.
Okay.
I appreciate being able to ask a couple of questions this evening and comment on some stuff that whether it's. Culture and protocol, but I appreciate that opportunity.
Well, you're welcome. We're, uh, generally fairly accommodating, you know, in that regard. We're not, uh, too formal, but. You know, we do have a policy in place if, if we need to exercise that policy and, uh, you know, with that's.
Haven't been asked to leave yet.
Not yet.
Well, thank you.
Yeah. Thank you for being here, Mike.
Thank you.
Okay. With that, we will. Are there any other questions that, from the public?
Ben's got something.
Ben?
Um, so there's going to be a town hall on December ninth at seven P M. Uh. Seeking community input for the proposed fire station. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, we're gonna close the public comment opportunity and we will move to council comments. Councilman Jorgensen?
Yeah, just a quick comment. Uh, like to thank, uh, Morgan and Caleb for the, the great tour of the, uh, water facilities. Um, uh, both of us took advantage of that and, and that was great. And then today spent some time with the, uh, police force and. Uh, really great insights with both of those visits. So it was, it was very helpful and just appreciate everything that they do. They're very. Uh, Morgan and Caleb are, uh, are top notch. They really know their stuff. And so that was, uh. Uh, good to see what they do. Uh, and I can't say enough about our, our police force as well.
Okay. Councilman Wilkins?
Um, I would just like to thank all the departments that help keep, help keep the city functioning as it should and. So that we can continue to provide our community what it needs. That is it, sir.
Okay. Councilman McCarty?
Nothing.
Okay, Councilman Bye?
I just wanna make sure you're in the front of the cop car, not the back.
I was in front.
Okay. Okay, I just wanted to make that. That's all.
Thank you for clarifying that.
You're welcome.
Yeah, appreciate that.
He asked us because his, his trip was in the back.
I know. I didn't get it.
Yeah. Okay. Is there any other business that needs to come before the council? Hearing none, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you for, uh, your efforts, everybody, staff and, and the council. There's a lot to go through, but, uh, it's important stuff.
Yes, sir.